We have Vidya out here, so we're all set.
Okay.
And the attorney.
Who's running the meeting, by the way?
I guess I am today.
Okay.
Yes.
Give me about 10 seconds.
All right.
Now that you're a veteran, you can just continue to...
Keep rolling.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perpetuity.
Good evening, and welcome everyone to the April 21st, 2022 Planning Commission Regular Meeting. I would ask that we have a call to order, please, and roll call.
Chairman McGee. Vice Chairman Hauser.
Here.
Secretary Sage.
Here.
Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Commissioners Gassen. King.
Here.
Lord.
Here.
Clark Martin. Stone.
I believe we have a quorum. Okay, all right, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, item number three, public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission in the public comment? Anyone on the...
Vice Chairman Hauser.
Yes.
I do have an email from a resident. It is regarding Forest Ridge Apartments. Would you like me to comment now or read that during the public hearing?
Is this the same document that was presented to the commission from Ann Fiskin?
Yes, it was.
It is, okay, so I think we should probably wait until the actual section on the Second Street there. So we'll just wait till 4B, if that's okay? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, number four, public hearings, going to 4A. Public hearing regarding the site plan for an addition to the Pfizer Building to house a new water for injection still to be located at 1200 Parkdale. Is there anyone here on this particular matter? Sir, please, to the lectern. If you wouldn't mind just stating your name and your affiliation, please.
Alex Phelan. I am the site design engineer that's responsible for the application and smittle. I've also brought with me Dave Sepple. He's a Pfizer representative for the project.
Thank you.
All right, so as you all know, we made a smittle for, in addition to the Pfizer warehouse, we're asking for a 46, or 460 square foot building addition to the building. That addition is going to house a water for injection still. So as you all know, it's just a big tank that holds really pure water. So there's not a lot of noise or anything that goes on it. There's another still that's in the building currently. This is going to be there for redundancy and extra production as well. So I'm here to answer any questions. I think we've addressed all of the comments from McKenna. So if there's any questions from the planning commissioner in the public, I'd be happy to address them.
And I may have gone a little bit out of order, so Vidya, I apologize if I stole your thunder here, but if you have any comments on your March 28, 2022 letter, I would certainly be welcome. Sorry.
Thank you, Chairman Hauser.
Okay.
If I may please be given a screen sharing, yes, thank you, I got it. I'm going to share the site plan on the screen at this time. As Mr. Phelan explained, the proposal from Pfizer is to add a 460 square foot, a single-story addition to accommodate a water for injection still that is at the southeast corner of the existing building. If you recall, in the year 2020, you did approve a WFI still, however, that never got constructed. At this time, the applicant is building a smaller facility. They do have a WFI still in the building, however, this is a backup facility to provide necessary redundancy in case something happens to the primary unit. They do have a backup unit also. The site is zoned RP, which is Research Park, and the proposed use is a principal permitted use in the district. This addition is only about 17 to 18 feet tall, and based on its location, it's almost entirely screened from view of Parkdale Road. There is only an overhead door on the south side of the building, which is not really visible from any public rights of way. There is going to be truck turning in this area, whatever limited trucks would access this area for a collection of materials from the structure itself. With regard to pedestrian circulation, the applicant is proposing to add this sidewalk connection to an existing network that already is there on the site. So nothing else is being altered. This addition is too small to require any more parking for the site. The site does have more than the required amount of parking, as we know from previous reviews of this proposal. With regard to architecture, I will just go to the architecture sheet. It is a very simple construction. It is standing seam metal panels to watch the, to match the existing building itself. It's very utilitarian in appearance, however, it matches what is there and will not be visible from Parkdale. On the roof is a hatchback unit, which also tends to get concealed because of the great distance from the street. The applicant did provide line of sight divines, as we have previously requested, and it does show that visibility is a little too non-existent from any adjacent properties or from Parkdale. No new signage is being proposed at this time. There are two fixtures shown over here. These are labeled as floodlights. However, the applicant did clarify at the last meeting that these are adjustable head fixtures. So the fixtures, even though called floodlights, will be angled downward or in a manner to illuminate only the immediate area that is needed. No trees are being removed, and this addition is being located on a previously impervious surface area, so no landscaping is being proposed either. The existing trash removal on the site and the dumpster locations remain unchanged. At this time, the applicant has addressed all of outstanding issues. Therefore, it's our recommendation that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval to Pfizer for the construction of the reduced size WFI still addition to be located at 1200 Parkdale. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions for Vidya? No questions? Mr. Phelan, thank you again for speaking. Okay, I don't have anything further. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to... Send it to a public hearing, or is this the public hearing?
This is the public hearing.
Yeah, this will be the public hearing.
Okay, did we open the public hearing?
Did we open?
No, did not.
I'm going to open the public hearing right now. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this particular issue? Seeing no hands or no one come up to the lectern, I will close the public hearing.
So I would make a motion to pass the construction for the water for injection at the Pfizer Building.
Support.
Support, okay, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioners, King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
That's it, thank you, okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Sepple, thank you as well. Public hearing regarding a site plan, oops, I'm sorry. Public hearing regarding a site plan to construct 167 new carports at Forest Ridge Apartments, located at 425 West Second Street. And this matter had been tabled from October 4th, 2021, at our regular Planning Commission meeting. Vidya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project has appeared before the Planning Commission on numerous occasions. The proposal is to construct 167 carports at an existing apartment complex. The site is zoned RM1, multiple-family residential, and the proposed carports are accessory use permitted by right in the RM1 district. I will pull up the site plan for the benefit of the Planning Commission. I'll go to the correct sheet. Okay, so this, minimize it a little bit. So this is the full site. The applicant had appeared before the Planning Commission on numerous occasions, each time to address certain concerns, and at the last meeting, there was some error in the notification process, as a result of which the applicant had to reappear before you tonight for the public hearing. The proposed carports will be constructed in three phases. Lots 2, which is this one, and lots 4 will be constructed as part of the first phase, Lot 3 as part of Phase 2, and improvements on Lot 1 and Lot 3, I'm sorry, Lot 1 will be Phase 3. So these two will be Phase 1, Phase 2, and this will be Phase 3. The subject site has four different parking lots. Each of the parking lots are designed to be self-sufficient to serve the buildings that they abut. The approaches to Lot 3 of South Wilcox Street was reconstructed, as were the approaches to Lots 2 in 2018 and fall of 2021. So these approaches are new, and they were just built, and they do provide ample circulation. At the last meeting, the Planning Commission, we had a discussion regarding the circulation patterns, and the applicant did submit circulation patterns to show that there's more than enough room for trucks to make the necessary turn movements. We had previously commented on the excessive width of the drive aisles, typically two-way drive aisles at 24 feet. These are 30 feet, however, the fire chief had indicated that they prefer the wider aisles, especially in older apartment complexes, in order to be able to take the ladder trucks. It gives some ample turn area or circulation area. So we kept our recommendation for them to retain the existing width of the drive aisles as is. There are several existing sidewalk connections within the apartment complex, and new connections are proposed wherever necessary in order to comply with ADA requirements. The biggest thing with issue was for parking. Based on the ordinance standards for the number of bedroom units, the site requires a total of 262 parking spaces. The plan notes a total of 312 parking spaces, which is a surplus of 60 spaces. And the reason there are additional spaces still being provided in some of the lots is it is not expected that somebody who lives in a building in this area or this area would actually walk up to the neighboring lot, park their car, and go near a unit. As I mentioned, each lot is designed to provide all of the required parking for the tenants or the residents in the abutting buildings itself. One of the biggest discussion points in previous meetings was the provision of no more than 20 parking spaces in an uninterrupted row, and the applicant had mentioned that there are significant wooded and landscape areas in the middle of the site, however, that is a parking requirement. And the applicant solved that by actually providing crosswalk areas in the middle of uninterrupted rows of parking, which technically met the requirement of the ordinance at this time. There was also significant discussion whether each and every one of the parking lots is barrier-free accessible and provides parking for those who are in wheelchairs, and the applicant did make the revision, and they do have... This is the site plan that is included in your packet that is posted online today. However, it doesn't look like it's the latest copy, because the applicant has shown that some of the spaces within this will be designated for handicap parking if needed by intent. It doesn't make sense to already designate them as handicap parking if there is nobody in need of any disability services. So if needed, they will definitely meet ADA requirements. Also, in response to concerns raised by the homeowner on the northeast corner of the property, the applicant has shifted the carport base down by four, so these will be open spaces. The applicant has also been proposing to replace an existing fence here, smaller white fence, with a six-foot high privacy fence, and they have also taken measures in order to accommodate any and all drainage on their property itself. They have been in conversation with the neighbor to the northeast, and I believe made all efforts actively to address all of the concerns that had come up. With regard to dumpster, there are dumpsters located for each of the lots. One of the issues we had brought up was this dumpster at the corner of Lot 1. Because of the grade slope, the top of the dumpster is still visible with a six-foot enclosure. The applicant had clarified that installing arborioty does not make sense, since the deers would eat all of it, which is a valid concern in that area. They have agreed to raise the height of the enclosure to eight feet, which is permitted by our ordinance, and that will provide the necessary screening, so we will not be able to see the units. There is a detailed landscape plan included as part of your packet, where the applicant is proposing extensive landscape improvements, including short stretches of picket fence to create a better, more inviting street frontage for all of these apartment units. The Section 2804 of the ordinance requires screening between the subject site and properties to the east that are zoned single-family residential. There is not just the grade that acts as a screen, there are also short stretches of existing fence over here. And as I mentioned, the applicant is moving four of these carports down further south to keep these open, so that the applicant's concern about the carport roofs draining onto their property is addressed. They're also putting in a six-foot tall privacy fence along the whole east property line. Lighting is provided under each of these carport units. Because of the design of the units, the lighting fixtures will not be visible from outside, but will provide the necessary illumination for the safety of those who are parking under the lots. The site also has numerous existing fixtures, all of which will be provided with shields for screening, with the exception of Lot 4, where the applicant does have a few floodlights. And the reason the applicant wanted the floodlights was to illuminate this wooded area for safety. We agreed based upon the applicant's explanation, since one of the goals of land use planning is public health, safety, and welfare, that is an overarching goal of planning. So they will be allowed to keep, our recommendation is that they be allowed to retain the floodlight fixture for this lot only. However, if the city should receive any complaints of the light fixture being a nuisance, at such time, the light fixture will be required to be replaced with a shielded fixture or be provided with a shield. And no new signage is shown at this time. The applicant has really worked with the city staff for the past six months, if not longer, in order to try to get this project to state where it is for approval before you tonight. We believe at this time, they have adequately addressed all of the concerns. So it is our recommendation that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval for the proposed carports and lot improvements for the Forest Ridge Apartments located at 425 West Second Street. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Vidya? Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead. Vidya, just a quick question. Are there, are there any variances or deviations that are required for the plan as of now?
No, no, not at this moment. The applicant is complying with the ordinance requirements for everything.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sage, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to know when we received the communication from citizen Ann Fiskin, or maybe she's a co-owner, so maybe she's not a citizen, I'm not certain. Did...
Did McKenna receive this?
No, I'm not sure what the letter being referred to is.
Okay.
It came in about 4 o'clock this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions from the commissioners? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the floor up to a public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment on this particular issue?
Chairman Hauser, you might want to ask the applicant to speak first.
Oh, you want me to speak first? Sure, okay. If there's anyone here from the applicant, please step up to the lectern.
Welcome back.
I don't think there's really anything more that I can add. Vidya has said it all, and obviously, we've been up here several times, and hopefully, we've done what you've asked us to do, and we'll go for approval. So if there's any questions of us, I'm here, we're here.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I guess, have they received this letter?
I don't think so.
So...
Yeah, it should be read, I think.
Yeah, so I was going to read that in the public comment then. So, okay, so to the extent that there's no questions for Mr. Leader, I will open up the floor for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment on this issue?
I think what you're saying is public hearing.
I'm sorry, public hearing, I'm sorry.
So you opened the public hearing?
Yes, I'm opening the public hearing. It is 7:24.
I think they've pretty much addressed most of our concerns.
Would you state your name for the record?
Deborah Lu Allen.
And your address?
292 First Street.
Thank you.
I'm one of the property owners at Village Square Condominiums, that is to the east of Forest Ridge.
Okay.
We've had some flooding issues from some of the houses that were built on Second Street, and we're concerned that with the carports, is there any going to, is there going to be any issue with changing the water flow that's going to cause additional flooding for us? Because we do sit lower than them. I don't know if the roof lines will make a difference off versus water flow out of the parking lot. So we just want to make sure that we're not going to suffer from this build.
That's understandable. If I could have someone, either Vidya or someone from the applicant would like to come up and address that question if possible, if you have an answer?
I got a call from...
And you are?
Kate Plodoff, sorry, Forest Ridge. I got a call from Sarah Whedon, who I believe is also part of this same development, if I am correct. She also expressed concerns about drainage issues that they had. There's a big retaining wall behind their property. But we had a good conversation about the carports, and don't believe that there'll be any impact at all. We're using the same parking lot to put carports right on top of the existing lot, which is nowhere near where they're having their drainage issues. But she did say it's a continuing problem, so they were concerned, but it seems like it would be okay.
Okay. Vidya, do you recall, this is Christian, do you recall any alterations to the grade or elevations in the parking lot as part of the milling and the replacement of that parking lot?
No, Chairman Hauser, but I think I can, the applicant is putting the carports on existing impervious surface areas, so they are not increasing the amount of pavement runoff any more than what currently exists. If they were, they are adding a few parking spaces here and there. However, once Planning Commission approval is done, they will have to go for full engineering with the city's engineering consultant, and the city will be checking stormwater drainage at that time to make sure that any additional drainage that is generated by the site is accommodated for by on the apartment complex property itself, and there should be no runoff at all onto the adjacent properties.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to... Oh, sorry, yes.
Yep, so we did have another one at the previous meeting that actually came in the following day after. So we received an email from Kelly Paluzzi, P-A-L-U-Z-Z-I, and that came in regarding the, on April 1st, regarding the April 4th, 2022 meeting. She said, and I'll read for the record, "My name is Kelly P., and I live at 409 West Second Street, one of the only residential homes abutting the apartment complex. I have this Friday, April 1st, never been notified by any Planning Commission meeting regarding the carports, proposed carports. I emailed Mr. Banda on March 14th, 2022, addressing my concerns, and he replied stating he would forward my email to the property manager Kate. I imagined my distress when I turned to the Planning Commission meeting online only through my own investigation into when the meeting was, and I heard Mr. Banda repeatedly state that he had spoken to me and quoting concerns I had. I would like the record to reflect that I have never spoken to Mr. Banda, and his words were his own. As for the carports, I have come to understand that this has been a done deal for a year in the making. As a citizen, I'm deeply disappointed and all involved, Kelly."
Okay. And we were also presented, when we came into the meeting, with a document on our tables from Ann Fiskin. And Mr. Wayne, would you want to read this into the record as well? Do you want me to do it?
I think Courtney actually can.
Okay, Courtney.
Real quick, before we go to that next one.
Yes.
When was the email from, is it Kelly Paluzzi?
Yep, so following the last meeting, and again, the commission might recall, due to the actual notices not going out on time, the commission did not do the public hearing or have, it was just an open discussion. I've pulled the actual addresses that were mailed to confirm that this, this last time. So for tonight's meeting, that they did do the 300-feet mailing appropriately, so that hopefully should, should address, you know, the previous person's concerns.
Okay, because we had an earlier email from that same person on February 15th, right?
It sounds like she, yeah, she reached out at least to Deputy City Manager Band on March 14th of 2022. I don't know if there was something prior to that.
Okay, I, there was an email in here.
Okay, Nick may have included it in the packet.
But I thought in our last meeting that we had an update that they had made some adjustments by moving the carports, shifting the carports, and it resolved those issues. Is that not the case?
I think Vidya could speak to that.
Yes, I believe, I don't know if it's the same owner, who's located to the northeast of the site. Since the concerns were brought to the attention of Kate from the apartment, they did reach out to the homeowner and speak to them, it is my understanding from my discussions with Kate, and as a result of which, the plans were changed. But the plans were changed after 20 copies of the plans had already been submitted to the city. We did not want the applicant to have to print everything out all over again, because the plans were already, had already been distributed. It would create confusion with the new set being distributed at the last minute, which wouldn't make it to you. So yes, the applicant had made changes, addressing their concerns specifically with shifting the four carports down further, so that the roof drainage will not go anywhere near their property line. They are replacing the smaller fence with a six-foot tall privacy fence. They are also containing all the drainage within their property itself. And they pretty much addressed all the concerns that might potentially impact the neighbor to the east. And they pretty much addressed all the concerns that might potentially impact the neighbor to the east. At this point of time, what the applicant is doing is on their own property. And with a six-foot fence and the fact that the carports are only seven feet tall with a sloped roof, you're not going to be able to see unless you're trying to peer over the fence. So I think the homeowner's concerns are addressed on the revised plan set. A final copy will be provided to the city by Kate and Mr. Leader.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a question. Mr. Wing, you had read an email from Ms. Paluzzi, I believe.
Yep.
Is it possible, if I could see, hold that for just a second, so I may read it? Because I have some questions, I think, for the applicant. Thank you. If you can just indulge me for just a quick moment. If, if I may, I have a couple of questions for the applicant. Okay. Have you, uh, wait till you get up there. That's okay. So have you spoken to, well, let's start here. Do you know who Kelly Paluzzi is?
Yes.
Okay. And when is the last time that you spoke to her?
Uh, I'll start from the beginning. I, we...
No, when, when's the last time? Yeah.
March eighteenth was my last email to her and Mike. And, um, we had a few meetings prior to that in person, and we'd been communicating email. And we agreed to do all the changes that Vidya just mentioned, and I did not hear back from that email.
Okay, so your last conversation with her was on March eighteenth, but we had a meeting subsequent to that, I believe. Is that correct? When was the last Planning Commission meeting?
First or whenever, you know, the first.
Yeah, so April first. So you have not spoken to Ms. Paluzzi since you were here last time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Has she called, and you've just not been able to get in touch with her?
Not that I'm aware.
Have you reached out to her, and she's not called you back?
I was the last person to reach out to her, so I didn't feel like it was necessary to contact her again. I did, you know, extend that she can let us know if there was any problems with what we proposed to her.
Okay. And Mr. Wing, the, the notification, because Ms. Paluzzi states that I up to this day, which is dated April first, never been notified of any Planning Commission meeting regarding the proposed carports. Would she have received no, yes, and can I see that for just a second, too? I just wanna confirm that.
This is, yeah, this is the list of all of the ones that were mailed.
Okay. So she would have received notice of this. Okay, I just wanna make sure. Yep.
Just, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Just for the benefit of the Planning Commission, this is a principal permitted accessory use to the building. By state law, you are not required to provide public hearing notices to property owners within three hundred feet. The city of Rochester has always been very transparent in its interactions, and that is why you have set up a system where you do go above and beyond what is required of you by sending out these three hundred foot notices. I just want to let you know that you have not violated any law or any protocol. This is a principal permitted use in the district. A notice is required under state law only for special exception or special land uses.
And, and I appreciate that. And all I wanted to do is just to confirm, because the comment from Ms. Paluzzi was that she did not receive notice. Her address is four oh nine West Second Street, and Mr. Wing has presented us with a register of addresses. And there is a current resident, four oh nine West Second Street, Rochester, Michigan. So taking Mr. Wing at his veracity, which I truly believe that she was in fact notified of this hearing. So I will give this back to Mr. Wing. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I have no further questions. Does, uh, before you, does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the phone.
Hi. Okay, Ms. Bliss, go ahead.
Hello.
Hi.
Denise Bliss, hello, Denise Bliss, five two one First Street. I'm directly south of the apartment complex. I couldn't see the diagram very well when it was being displayed. The bottom was cut off, but it does appear, uh, uh, First Street might have an additional entrance that's being added. Is that true? Off of First Street?
Vidya?
It's, it's, it's just hard to tell based on the diagram. This is actually better. Thank you. Let me go.
No, actually, they are, Ms. Bliss, they are not adding any new entrances. All the existing entrances will be there. They just need to widen this. This is currently twenty feet. The ordinance's minimum width requirement for two-way movement is twenty-four feet. So this will only be widened to twenty-four feet, and this will continue to remain. They will just improve the pavement. There'll be no new access added to First Street.
Okay, perfect. This is a much better view for me. Thank you for adjusting the diagram, because now I can get some semblance of where my house is comparison to the, uh...
Sorry, it's like, I keep trying to minimize or maximize making sure the whole site is seen, so there you go.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Bliss. Mr. Wing, I think we may have gotten sidetracked here. There was an email from Anne Fiskin. I think someone was gonna read that into the record as well.
I think Courtney was gonna do that.
Okay, Courtney?
Her email states, "My name is Anne Fiskin. I am a Village Square co-owner since two thousand, residing at two seven two First Street, adjacent to Forest Ridge Apartments. I ask that my comments concerning the proposed Forest Ridge Apartments carport project be read and included in public comments at the April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two Rochester Planning Commission meeting. One, why was no effort made sufficiently in advance about April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two to contact individual Village Square condominium co-owners? Addresses two ninety, two ninety-two, two ninety-four, two ninety-six, two eighty, two eighty-two, two eighty-four, two eighty-six, two seventy, two seventy-two, two seventy-four, two seventy-six, two sixty, two sixty-two, two sixty-four, two sixty-six, two fifty, two fifty-two, two fifty-four and two fifty-six, adjacent to Forest Ridge Apartments. In the past, when a proposal was under consideration, example, two one one Walnut, now occupied by suburban Vane Center, all affected property owners within three hundred feet were notified, were notified by mail fifteen days in advance of the opportunity to provide public comment and attend a Planning Commission meeting held for the purpose. Two, in two thousand and five, Village Square Condominiums, hereby referred to as V S Q, removed severely deteriorated tiered retaining wall constructed of creosite, treated wood timbers, and replaced it with a tiered retaining wall constructed of cement blocks. At that time, a property survey was obtained, plans were drafted by an engineering firm, and a contractor was selected to construct the new wall. The city of Rochester inspected the wall and approved the work. The wall was constructed to address the fact that, A, no HUD insured insurance could be approved unless the existing wall was repaired or replaced because of identified safety risks; and B, no property insurance could be obtained unless the wall was repaired or replaced, with the result that all existing mortgages would become immediately due and payable in full for an attorney opinion. Now, property line markers are inserted as a result of the Forest Ridge Property Survey on what was previously determined, determined to be V S Q property, where the two thousand and five wall replaced the previous deteriorated wall. There are two issues. One, what if any action has been taken by Forest Ridge concerning the property line markers that appear to be on V S Q property in view of the proposed carport construction? That has obvious implications for V S Q Building Three owners who need safe, unimpeded access to both enter and exit their garages and for Building Three visitors parking in designated parking spaces located at the bottom of the first tier of the retaining wall. See item number four below. Two, had the association been apprised of the project when the, when proposed by Forest Ridge, V S Q could have, A, obtained its own survey, B, requested the forest, that Forest Ridge identify how the retaining wall would be impacted by carport construction, and C, addressed the impact before the Rochester Planning Commission. See item four number, see item number four below. Three, I read from the March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two McKenna Submitte that Forest Ridge plans to widen the southeast access road to lot number four, adjacent to V S Q off First Street, but saw no landscaping planned to offset the view of the carports from the V S Q property, specifically V S Q Building Number Two. What plans, if any, have been made to improve the view, the V S Q van, from the V S Q vantage point? Number four, there is no information in the March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two McKenna Submitte that addresses the impact of the extra weight load created by the proposed twenty-two carport bays in the Forest Ridge Lot Number Two on adjacent V S Q remaining, retaining wall behind V S Q Building Number Three, addresses two seventy, two seventy-two, two seventy-four and two seventy-six. The Forest Ridge Lot Number Two is accessed from Second Street. If an engineering analysis has been done that, that addressed this concern, was the analysis furnished to V S Q so that it could be shared with affected co-owners?
Thank you. So I guess the, a couple of questions here that I have preliminarily is, Vidya, you had spoken a moment ago about any notice requirement that may have been in place here. Could you address item number one? And when the author, Ms. Fiskin writes, was, why was no effort made to, to notice these individual notice? Is that required under this particular issue?
No, it is, it is not. In my twenty-two years' experience that I have been doing planning, I think in Rochester, we have a very transparent process of informing all the homeowners and neighbors, whether it is required or not. It's a good thing we do that. However, there comes a time when you've got to draw a line at how much burden you place on a property owner when it is not mandated by state law. Once again, this is a principal permitted use. You cannot go above and beyond requiring an applicant to do items that are not mandated by the ordinance. The ordinance does not have specific requirements for landscaping, except for screening, which the applicant is attempting to meet. So the applicant is under no obligation to attempt to contact each one of those condominium units and solicit the opinion of each individual homeowner or the condo complex on how it's going to impact them. The applicant has got a right to do what they are doing on their property, subject to Planning Commission approval, of course. With regard to, um, the concerned homeowners' concern about the retaining wall, the weight load, those are engineering issues. Those are not addressed at a planning state. Once the Planning Commission takes action to approve this project, it goes into full engineering, at which time, the carports, the load they bring, the drainage they might cause, and any adjacent impacts caused due to grading will be reviewed by the city's engineer. These questions are premature at this point of time, and an answer cannot be given to say this is going to be the impact or not. It would be the city engineer's responsibility, when they are reviewing the plan, to work with Forest Ridge and make sure that the engineering is done per the requirements of the city's engineering codes. I believe at this point of time, this is the applicant's possibly fifth appearance before the Planning Commission, and I think they have made every effort to comply with the concerns that have been raised time and time again at every meeting. And they are in no way, shape or form obligated to make any more outreach than what they have already done.
I appreciate that. Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Anyone else on the line? Okay, at this time, it's seven forty-three, and we'll close the public comment on this particular matter. Thank you. So I guess the next step is motion, correct?
Yeah, we tabled it from before. Was there a motion, Mr. City Manager?
I don't see one. Uh, it was, it was tabled because we didn't have the public notice. And so it was just a discussion at the last.
So I would make a motion to approve the carports at Forest Ridge Apartments as submitted. Support.
Support. I have one quick question for voting purposes. There's five of us up here today. There's nine members. Do you need to have all five as a majority? Uh, or unanimous, or is it the, or the majority of the five?
I believe it's all five. Attorney Krot?
Yes.
That's Attorney Krot, yes.
Yes, those would be, uh, you need a majority of the board, not just those present.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
If, if I may just suggest that the Planning Commission might want to add a condition that Forest Ridge submit an updated site plan for the city's files showing the changes along the northeast property line with the new fence as was presented by the applicant.
Okay. I would put that in my motion.
Duly noted. Okay.
Second, I need to... Concur.
Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Mayor Bixen?
Yes.
Commissioners King?
Yes.
And Lord?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Next item, consideration of a site plan approval for the temporary installation of a freestanding tent structure in the southerly portion of the site adjacent to the existing building. Structure will be ADA accessible and used as work on the existing building is done this year. Vidya, anything from you?
Uh, no, I believe this would be the City Manager, Commissioner Hauser.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Wing?
Yeah, Vidya, would you mind pulling up on the, I guess, the, the site plan, just so that? It's in the packet. Uh, let's see. Five pages to the end, I think. Vidya's pulling it up. Uh, I think if you can pull, I guess, go up a little bit more so they can see where the actual pad would be.
Okay, uh, scroll up.
Uh, if you, I guess, go down, I guess, we'll actually pull the drawing up. Yep, there you go. Yep, that gray area, perfect.
Oh, okay.
All right. So, um, the city is the owner of the property, and it's part of the park that the Rochester Community House is located at, um, as shown in the site plan here. We've poured a pad, and, uh, before a tent, a temporary tent would be placed this year, we need to, um, seek temporary approval from the Planning Commission. The, uh, passed with COVID, petitioners have been able to adjust as the city management team, but now that the, uh, uh, emergency powers have concluded, it does need to now come back to the Planning Commission. In your packet on page sixty-four, um, we are requesting from the months of May through the end of October for this temporary tent. And I guess, Vidya, if you can show, there's a little picture. I don't know if you can zoom in a little bit more. That's a, you know, I guess, a diagram or example of, of the tent. Tonight, this would basically need to get approval to move on to the public hearing component, which would be at your first meeting in May. And we do have the Executive Director, Alan Smith, here.
I, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Can you just clarify, because it says, um, temporary installation of a freestanding tent. Is the tent temporary in the fact that it's up from May to October annually? So this is a longer term, or is it temporary as in this is in place while the construction work is being done?
Yep. Um, so for this project or any other project, the temporary component is the timeframe, and it would have to come back for the Planning Commission every year. So that's the, the component. This might be a good time to provide an update, too. Unfortunately, the cost to do the renovations for the community house came in several million dollars more than was estimated. And, um, the, the city, as well as the community house, is looking at potentially still doing some renovations. It might be a roof replacement, window siding and some other things. And so they won't be able to necessarily be inside if those renovations take place. We've applied for several state and federal grants as well, so some additional dollars might come online. To allow them basically to still function and meet the requirements and their arrangements and contracts, that's why they basically had planned to, to have a tent. Again, we, none of us were anticipating, uh, the, the extra cost so that the construction wouldn't necessarily start. So for this year, what we're asking is from May through, I mean, so it would have to be after the, the Planning Commission meeting in May for the tent to go up, hopefully with approval, and then to the end of October for this year. Again, we don't know necessarily if we're gonna be able to do part of the roof replacement and, and/or window and siding and other ones. We are still trying to do that.
Good question.
Commissioners, any other questions? Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
First, I'd like to say, I kinda liked it when we had emergency powers there. It's kinda fun. No, just kidding. I would like to make a motion to appro, to move, excuse me, to move this to the next, was it for a public hearing?
Correct.
To have a public hearing at the next, uh, Planning Commission meeting in May.
Okay. Can I, before we vote on that, can I ask one other question?
Of course.
I, I assume that the city... I assume that the city has noise ordinances that would apply? And the reason I ask, there's already emails kind of going around neighborhoods with concerns about this, so I know it'll come up at the public hearing, but would just be helpful to know what that is, what the restrictions would be for the tent?
Yep, so part of the reason, Vidya, if you could show the drawing back again, there's going to be sides on the majority of it, so that will kind of keep the noise down, but they will have to be in compliance with our decibels with the noise ordinance as well. So just like Penny Black, if they were to have, you know, entertainment or music, and we're also looking as part of this project and the greater project, adding some arborities and some other, I guess, containment, so that will absorb some of the noise as well.
And what are, are there certain hours? Do you know?
Alan, I don't know what hours that you're planning on.
It says eight to 11 in the drawing.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, the drawing says 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Monday through Sunday.
So would the, would the tent have access to electric?
Yep, power, heat, and we've had to work with.
Via direct line from the community house? Are you doing a portable generator or?
Direct line. It will be approved by your, the city inspector before the element, and we're open to that in charge.
Great, thank you.
Other questions, too, have been in the past, and we were working with our billing official as well as our engineers to ensure that the ADA access and also EGRIS, so that there would be at least the minimal for the two, for this temporary structure, so that will be in compliance with our building codes as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Everyone good? Okay, so we had a motion and did someone?
Support.
Support. Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioners King?
Yes.
And Lord?
Yes.
Moving on, miscellaneous, any miscellaneous items this evening?
Only thing that I would share is our new building and planning clerk did start this week, so Rose McKinney. She came to us from Frazier, Michigan, where she was in several different roles, but is quite experienced, and she comes to Rochester with almost 30 years of that experience, software and knowledge, and she's already been assimilating quite well into our staff. So it's been a pleasant addition, and here shortly, she'll be coming to one of these meetings so that she can meet the, you know, the full planning commission.
Great, thank you. Any public comment? Anyone else on the phone or on the Zoom? None noted? Okay. Oh, yes, Mr. Wang.
At the city council meeting, we talked about, remember Vidya had offered to have a seminar, and people in the city council want to do it as well, so we're talking about having a joint meeting as we get closer. I did talk to the, I mean, one of the impetuses is the school building. I did talk to the superintendent, and he said they're going to be taking, you know, a couple of months to kind of go through all the things, so we have some time, but, you know, we want to get that, get that planned as soon as possible. So I think the city manager or somebody's going to reach out and try to pick a day, and Vidya was gracious enough to offer that.
Yep, we've been, administration's been working with Vidya and her staff to actually get that scheduled. So we'll have some dates that will go out to both the city council and planning commission so that we can select one.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? Mr. Sage, go ahead, please.
Thank you. So it mentions in upcoming agenda items, do we need to set, or do we need to make a motion to set a public hearing for the site plan approval that we just made regarding the temporary?
Yeah, I thought that's what we did, was to set a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah. Correct. A little presumptuous in the minutes, I guess, but that's fine. So, yes, that's, okay, because the next meeting is May 2nd, which you will not be here, is that correct?
Well, not.
Okay, all right. So that being said, that'll be on May 2nd, I suppose, for the public hearing on that issue, and everything else is fine. Okay. Anything else, final? That's it, going once? Okay. Thank you. Adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Vidya.
I'll be on the beat.